Good afternoon. This is the regular meeting of the New Ulam Planning Commission, New Ulam, Minnesota. It's Thursday, July 27, 2017, 4:30 PM. Item one would be to approve the minutes from the June 29 meeting.
Ah, so moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second approving the minutes as read. Any other discussion? Hearing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item two, it's a public hearing, and you want me to go through this first, or you want to start? Want me to go?
Yeah, go through the.
All right. Item A, consider the application of Tony Golden on behalf of Windshuttle Golden Enterprises Incorporated requesting a conditional use permit to locate, excuse me, locate a storage facility on property zone B2 Service Business District and legally described as block three and the westerly 100 feet, the block two of outlot A. Valley Heights Edition in southeast one quarter section 13, township 110, range 31, City of New Ulam, Brown County, Minnesota, excepting therefore from the following, the east 40 feet of the north 250 feet of the west 100 feet of block two of outlot A. Now that's clear as mud for everyone, I'm sure. Okay. Go.
Okay. Members of the planning commission, the street address of the property is 1414 West Ridge Road. Property is zoned B2 Service Business District. Notice of the public hearing has been provided to all property owners within 350 feet of the subject property. Background information, the property is located northwest Ridge Road and east of Cole's Wheelborne Chevrolet. Located on the property is a single-family building of 20,400 square feet, constructed in 1979, and most recently occupied by Hunter's Den. The property has a total lot area of 3.31 acres. Property to the east and west is zoned B2, to the north R.A., Agricultural Residence District, and R3 Multiple Family Residence District, and R.A. to the south. Land uses to the west include commercial buildings, to the east a warehouse and apartment building, to the north a residence and vacant property, and to the south commercial buildings and single-family residences. There's parking in the front of the building. The area to the east of the building is level and has been used for parking and storage. The purpose of the B2 zoning district is to provide a district for a wide range of services and goods which might be incompatible with the uses permitted in retail business districts. It is intended that the B2 Service Business District be located in separate areas which may be adjacent to other retail business districts or in close proximity to a major street. Permitted uses in the B2 district include a combination of retail, service, office, and light industrial uses. Other business activities of the same general character as those listed as a permitted use are allowed in the B2 zoning district with a conditional use permit. A storage facility is a permitted use in the I-1 and I-2 zoning district. In order to recommend approval of the permit, the commission will need to determine that. Number one, the proposed uses of the same general character as permitted uses in the B2 zone, and two, the request complies with the conditions required for the granting of a conditional use permit. On the reverse side of the application, there's listed the seven conditions and the applicant's response to them, and those are the conditions required for approval. An eighth question asked, what should the city, why should the city approve your request? And the applicant's answer was to have a large property kept up to a higher standard than now, also keep eight to 10 jobs in New Ulm. Since 2000, the city has approved nine similar requests to place storage uses in a B2 zoning district. I might note that one of, or two of those uses were for the same property. So it actually is eight separate parcels of property. Attached is a copy of the application. I would note that the application has been signed by the applicant, but it also has been signed by the owner of the property, which is Farmers and Merchants Bank of Springfield. There's a zoning map showing the location of the property, an aerial photograph of the property, and then a ground level photograph. Staff would recommend approval of the request with the condition that the applicant pay the cost to record the permit with Brown County. Staff would make this recommendation for the following reasons. Number one, request complies with the conditions required for the granting of a conditional use permit, section 9.82 of the city code. Two, the proposed uses of the same general character as some of the permitted uses in the B2 zone. Three, proposed business activities would generally be less intense than most B2 uses. And four, the city has previously allowed storage facilities in B2 zoning districts with no apparent problems. That concludes the report.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this particular matter? Please step to the microphone, state your name and address. A lot of people. No one wish to speak on this matter? Okay, I'd recommend we close the public hearing and move on. Motion to close the.
Oh, for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second closing the public hearing. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now what's your wishes?
Does staff know, is this storage unit one where we typically would see the various garage doors with, you know, multi-tenants, or is it a bigger storage area?
It's staff's understanding that this is for business purposes, that the, these two individuals are associated with NAPA, and that they would use this facility to store product that then would be distributed to various retail outlets that they operate.
Okay. But if there was, this was granted, there would be nothing to prohibit it from later being changed as the type of storage.
That is correct.
Okay. So storage is a storage regardless of how it's designed.
Yeah. It would be a combination office and storage facility.
Yeah, I see that.
I'd like to see that building.
Yes.
It's been sitting empty long enough.
Long.
You know, it's nice to see somebody being a little creative to come up with a use for it.
I'd grant the motion to, for the conditional use permit with any attachments the city put on there.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second approving the request with the conditions that were just read off. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. This will now go to the city council on Tuesday, August 1st, 4:30. Moving on to 2B. Consider the petition of Brian Grammas, Executive Director of the City of New Ulam Economic Development Authority, requesting the following approvals for the property legally described as part of lot 1, block 2, 5th North Street, First Edition. Now he's got three requests. I'm going to read them all off.
Yes.
Item one, is that a portion of the property be zoned from R1 Single Family Residence District to R2 Single and Two Family Residence District? And item 2A, that a portion of the property be rezoned from R1 Single Family Resident District to R3 Multiple Family Residence District? And item 2B, that the comprehensive plan for the City of New Ulm be amended for the property identified in item 2B and 2A to permit medium-density residential, MDR, land use to place low-density residential land uses. Mr. Snowbrick will go through.
Correct. Okay, just to clarify, that the comprehensive plan amendment only is assigned to the property proposed for rezoning to R3. It does not apply to the property being rezoned to R2, since R2 uses are permitted in the low-density residential area. Okay. The owner of the property is the New Ulm Economic Development Authority. There is a pending sale to S&amp;P Development LLC. The legal description of the property is part of lot 1, block 2, 5th North Street, First Edition. More detailed legal descriptions of the property proposed for rezoning are provided in the agenda packet. Street addresses for the property are, the property that's proposed for rezoning to R3 is 628 to 644 Wajou Avenue, 636 to 644 Haberly Avenue, and 633 to 645 Haberly Avenue. The rezoning from R1 to R2, the street address is 607 to 643 Wajou Avenue. Notice of the public hearing has been provided to all property owners within 350 feet of the subject property. Background, this background information applies to all of these requests. The property is generally located north and west of Fender Drive and south of the extension of Beinhorn Street. Property is undeveloped. The city and the New Ulm Economic Development Authority purchased 36.12 acres of property in the fall of 2005 as a site for an affordable housing project. A development plan was prepared for the entire property in 2007. That plan had a total of 97 lots. The entire parcel was rezoned to R1 in 2007 as well. Phase one of the property was platted in 2007 as Milford Heights First Edition. This plat consisted of 29 lots, two outlots, and totaled 15.78 acres. Phase one was originally scheduled to be fully developed by 2012. To date, the EDA has built and sold 11 houses, sold six lots, and currently has two houses for sale. If you do the arithmetic, there are now 10 lots also available for sale. The EDA has determined that it is not financially feasible to continue with this housing concept. And that is the idea of providing affordable housing. The EDA had discussed other development options for the undeveloped portion of the property. Those options included a mix of larger market rate lots, smaller affordable lots, and areas for townhomes and/or twin homes. The EDA has accepted an offer to sell the remaining 20.34 acres of property. In your agenda, you will find a copy of the rezoning and plan amendment petition, a land use map from the city's comprehensive plan, the development plan from 2007, a land use map from the city's comprehensive plan identifying the property proposed for amendment and the current land use classifications in this area, a zoning map of this area, an aerial photograph of the property, and two ground level photographs of the property. I would like now to kind of focus on the comprehensive plan amendment. And so we're only talking about the area that is proposed for zoning.
R3.
To R3. A comprehensive plan is an official document adopted by a local unit of government as a policy guide to decisions about the physical development of the community. The plan is intended to be comprehensive, general, and long-range. A comprehensive plan is intended to provide an outline for future community development. The plan provides a foundation for land use management and control. The city's current plan was adopted on September 4th, 2007. The subject property is 3.05 acres. So it's just a little bit bigger than a typical city block is what we're talking about in the gridiron part of the community. The requested change to MDR, which stands for Medium Density Residential, would permit the location of multifamily dwelling units on the property. Amendment criteria. A recommendation on the proposed comprehensive plan amendment should take into consideration the following type of criteria. And I might note that the last time we had a comprehensive plan amendment, I noted that this is information that I've gathered from the internet since there is nothing either in state statute or in the city code that gives direction on criteria to be used for evaluation of this type of an amendment. Number one, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan and its goals, objectives, and policy? Number two, does it address the interests and needs of the entire city? Number three, does it address changed conditions since the last time the comprehensive plan map or text was amended? Number four, is the subject property suitable for development in general conformance with adjacent land uses and the surrounding development pattern? Number five, are there municipal services available to serve the property? And number six, does it demonstrate a public benefit and embrace the public health, safety, and welfare of the city? Okay, current designations and land use in this particular area. The comprehensive plan currently designates the property to the east for LVR and park and open space uses, to the north and west for LVR uses, and to the south for LVR public and semi-public and medium-density residential uses. Land uses to the east consist of low-density residential and a park area, to the north undeveloped and farm property, to the west farm property, and to the south single-family land uses. Okay, within the comprehensive plan, there are a couple of definitions that I'd like to review. The first is for low-density residential. Low-density residential provides areas for neighborhoods of primarily single-family housing. Single-family housing can be described as a building intended to serve as a dwelling for one person or family unit. The traditional freestanding detached home provides the most common example of single-family housing. Structures designed as a dwelling for two families, duplex or twin home are also an allowed form of low-density residential. So that's where we make the connection, it's not necessary to amend the comprehensive plan for the proposal to rezon to R2. The low-density residential designation applies to both older and developing neighborhoods in New Ulm. In general, this category applies to all areas of single-family homes. Second definition that I'd like to read is the one for medium-density residential. Medium-density residential provides areas for single-family housing units that are attached to one another. Examples of these housing types include twin homes, townhomes, and rowhouses. This land use could also include a mixture of attached housing and detached housing units in an integrated neighborhood. Buildings should not be more than two stories in height. Single structures with multiple housing units would be allowed, subject to density and height limitations. Density and medium-density residential areas should not exceed eight units per acre. Okay, there are some applicable comprehensive plan goals and policies that apply in this particular situation, and they fall underneath the category of land use. Goal number two is to create and maintain quality places to live. Policy number 2.3 says that we should allow different types of housing in neighborhood locations, thereby avoiding the concentration of similar residential uses in one area. Item 2.5, we should provide a supply of housing for a wide range of needs and incomes. And policy 2.6 reads that we should promote an adequate supply of housing options for seniors, single persons, and families that do not want or cannot afford the typical single-family home. Okay, staff comments. The proposed MDR area would be small and would be surrounded by LVR areas. It would also introduce a higher density and different style of residential use in this area. The original development plan for the property, and I'm referring to the 2007 development plan, that had the 97 single-family lots on it, had 11 single-family dwellings in the subject area. The proposed plan would place 17 townhomes in rows of four, six, and seven. So the original plan had seven, the proposal is to go to 17. The city's comprehensive plan in the MDR designation references the possible use of land to include a mixture of attached housing and detached housing units in an integrated neighborhood. This statement would appear to support single-family and lower-density multifamily uses in the same location. The comprehensive plan has also established LVR and MDR areas abutting each other on North Highland Avenue between 5th and Oak Street, on Boundary Street in and near Lakeside Village Edition, on Cottonwood Street, on 5th North Street adjoining the MLC Athletic Fields, and on North and South Broadway. Considerations. Does the proposed change generally comply with the criteria described earlier? That's number one. Number two, is this an appropriate location for MDR land uses, given the residential density and the type of residential construction permitted? So that concludes my remarks regarding the comprehensive plan amendment. Now I'd like to go to the zoning of the property. So we're looking at two different zoning requests, from R1 to R2, and from R1 to R3. Background, property to the east is zoned R1 and R.A., which is Agricultural Residence District, R1 and R.A. to the south, and R1 to the north. The property located in Brown County is zoned R1. This particular parcel property directly abuts property located in Milford Township. Utilities to serve the property are located in the streets that will provide access to the property. The rezoning would allow twin homes to be constructed on the property to be zoned R2, and townhomes on the property to be zoned R3. One twin home will be located on two lots, so it's one lot per dwelling unit. It has been city policy in the past to require R2 zoning for these types of structures. Recommendations on rezoning requests are to be based on consideration of the following criteria. Whether the proposed rezoning corrects an error in the original zoning text or map, or whether the proposed rezoning addresses needs arising from a changing condition, trend, or fact affecting the subject property and surrounding area. The third criteria is whether the proposed rezoning is consistent with achieving the goals and outlines, or objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan. The rezoning must meet one of the first two criteria. So the first two criteria were whether the proposed rezoning corrects an error in the original text, and in this particular case, that doesn't apply. The second one is whether the proposed rezoning addresses needs arising from a changing condition, trend, or fact affecting the subject property and surrounding area. Okay, comments. Approval of the amendment to the comprehensive plan would designate the property for medium-density residential housing. R3 zone property would be permitted in an MDR comprehensive plan category. R2 zone property is already permitted in the LDR category. The original development plan for the property, again going back to those 97 single-family units, had a total of seven single-family lots where these twin homes are proposed. So a total of four twin homes, or eight units are proposed for the property. So we go from seven in the 2007 plan to eight at this time. Of the first two criteria described above for the rezoning of property, excuse me, we have to identify, then, are there any changing conditions, trends, or facts affecting the subject property and the surrounding area? And so I have identified potential conditions, trends, or facts that meet that criteria. The first is that the areas proposed for rezoning is undeveloped and is in an area intended for residential development. Utilities are available to serve the property. Secondly, the original development plan is no longer being pursued. Three, the City of New Ulm has recently completed a housing study update, and that was just this past May, and that was done by Community Partners Research Incorporated. And within that study update, there were the following statements, and I'd like just to read some sections from that report. So there's a statement that reads, "Housing units that are attractive to middle-aged and older adult households will continue to represent the largest share of home ownership demand in the New Ulm area over the five-year projection period of the study. The forecast used in this update expects approximately 70% of the demand to be in a moderate to higher price range." So this new home ownership should represent a mix of single-family homes as well as attached housing, which can appeal to mature households as they age. While attached housing units such as twin homes or townhomes would be well-matched to life cycle needs, this segment of the market has remained very suppressed in New Ulm for many years. Another statement, "In 2017, there continues to be a suppressed demand in New Ulm for attached, single-family housing construction. According to annual building permit reports, only 5% of recent single-family housing starts are twin home units. Going forward, demand should improve, and up to 20% of future construction should emerge within the owner occupancy, excuse me, segment. As consumer confidence returns, it should not be surprising to see an even greater level of activity within this housing segment. Attached housing provides desirable alternatives for empty nesters and seniors to move out of their single-family homes. These existing homes then become available for younger families. It is important for the community to offer a range of life cycle housing options." These statements indicate that there is a need for a greater diversity of housing types within the community. Our current housing inventory does not include the volume and type of housing found in many communities our size in the state of Minnesota. Okay, considerations. Should the property remain zoned R1 and be developed in this manner? That's number one. Number two, does the requested rezoning meet the criteria for a changing trend, condition, or fact? Number three, is rezoning to R2 and R3 appropriate in this location, given the change in residential density and type of residential construction permitted? Should note that the approval of the rezoning to R3 should be subject to the approval of the comprehensive plan amendment. Also should note that the city, as part of any development project, will require a development agreement, and many of the statements that are incorporated in the Stafford Report would be, become part of that document. That concludes my.
All right. Well, this is a public hearing, so is Mr. Paylor or representative would wish to speak?
Yes.
If so, would you please step up to the microphone, state your name and address?
Al Paylor, 519 Valley View Drive, Cortland.
And I'm Mark Schaefer, and I'm 11838 State Highway 68, New Ulm.
Commissioners, thank you for your time. So we took this project on, been working with the EDA on exactly what David Ed said, the changing trends, and what's going on in the city of New Ulm with demand. One of the hard things for many communities is change, and we've done a lot of research between Mark and myself. We've been working with Jeff Dietrich, Kekaritz Realty, and business owners throughout town for the last couple of months, just to see. for the last couple of months, just to see what the talk is. And times are changing. Twin homes, as a contractor, twin homes, patio homes, residential, I mean, we can't build fast enough for what the sales are. And part of it is, is the land use. Seems like the younger generation, you know, is looking at less maintenance, yes, less yard because their lives are so busy, and that's part of the rowhouse design or townhomes that we're looking at. It's kind of a transition from the homes that are up there to their back detached, or their attached garages. You go to the twin homes and the rowhouses, and then farther towards the high school, we're looking at those lots, we're increasing the sizes, and those, we're hoping are going to start out in the three-hundred range. You know, three hundred thousand sounds like a lot of money now, but, you know, sixteen-hundred square foot, seventeen-hundred square foot house kind of starts there on a finish basis. So, working with the EDA and what their plans and what the report said, we're trying to diversify and get all these different changes brought into the area. So that's how we come up with the plan, and we have some pictures here that David kind of wanted some ideas, if everyone can see them. So this is the typical twin home scenario. They'd be two stall garages, we might have one set with a triple garage on it, we have had some requests for that, they need three stall for their boat, or extra vehicles. You see these quite a bit throughout the town, I mean, they're located in regular residential districts, you wouldn't really know that it's a twin home unless you look that it's connected, there's no dividing two walls in there with grass growing in between. And these can range anywhere from, you know, your one ninety to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar value, and this would be on the west side of the subdivision. And then Mark has the rowhouse design. These are set up in three, four, up to six, seven units, as David stated on the rezone. As you can see, we've put time in, I mean, this is the actual plans that we've had drawn, we've been working, we're not, you know, just throwing a dart, we're working this with our preliminary plat to show some architectural, bring, you know, so everything's not, you know, I don't know, alike, I mean, it looks alike there, but we've got a lot of architectural design in the front that kind of brings it out, there's a little more cost involved, but we're trying to do something different to bring something new to New Ulm that maybe will catch on. These are two-story units, and they're going to be right around two thousand square foot finished. The layout has, you know, your living quarters on the bottom with a master, in case they don't, you know, it fits the older generation, or if you don't want to do steps. And then if you have the grandkids, or you do have a family, you have a three-bedroom option upstairs, so it kind of fits both needs, that you can be on one main floor with the laundry, or you can have the two-floor facility. So that's kind of where we're going forward. You know, the demand is there, we're already working with Kekaritz on, you know, we have land sale on residential already, we have someone in the twin home interested, it is taking up, picking up pretty quick, so we would appreciate the commission to take a close look at our request and hope to work this out.
Are there any issues for you relative to assessments for that whole area?
So, one of the things to keep it moving is, is Mark and I are taking on the infrastructure costs upon ourselves. We need to move quick, we have to get into the building season this year, we have people that need to build this year. So, I have talked to some dirt companies, you know, for getting infrastructure in. You'll be seeing some paperwork on a preliminary plat, we're trying to keep the process moving so we can kind of follow behind with our engineers and our development agreements, you know, then we got to go through all the piping, infrastructure. So, we are going to take on the cost of the infrastructure, and that will be incorporated in the price of the lot when we sell the house, so when they turn the key, they're done. No, you know, they're not going to get anything in the future, unless there's something we don't know about yet from the city. I did hear a little bit about street lighting the other day, I don't know when that comes in, but as far as the underground, the roads and everything will be our cost.
If, a question for you, the townhomes, what type of height are we looking at from the first floor to the peak of the roof?
So these are, fifteen, do a five-twelve. No, just let me calculate quick here.
So there's no airport flyway issues relative to the?
No, this is, this is not as tall as this two-story house is, because the roofs are pitched, but they're not as wide.
And there's no basements to these?
Correct, we're looking at probably not putting basements in these. So you're in that twenty-two to twenty-four foot range based on the roof pitch that we're going to use, because the units are only thirty feet wide. So it keeps the, you know, if you get into that fifty, sixty-foot wide, you know, your rise to run, your peak gets pretty tall, so this will keep it under, most two-stories now, people are running nine-foot and ten-foot walls per floor, so they tend to get into that twenty-six-plus range, so we'll be quite a bit less than that.
Okay.
All right.
Anyone else wish to speak on the matter? Please step to the microphone.
Good afternoon, my name's Tom Romain, my wife Deanna and I reside at 644 Fender Drive, and I would like to speak in opposition to the rezoning and the change in the comprehensive plan. The reasons for that are, that the statement was made that this is compatible with the existing community around it, and I would dispute that. The, the community around it, the Milford Heights First Edition, I'm going to read from the design criteria requirements, it says, "The Milford Heights First Edition of the city of New Ulm is a transgenerational community consisting of traditional, single-family homes. The Milford Heights First Edition will be a pedestrian-oriented neighborhood that incorporates sidewalks, public parks and paths, ponds, tree-lined streets and alleys. The neighborhood will emphasize the home and de-emphasize automobiles. The development will include a variety of traditional home designs with front porches and traditional architectural detailing. Design style emphasis. The community of the Milford Heights First Edition, city of New Ulm, has been developed to feature the unique characteristics and requirements associated with architecturally-themed traditional neighborhoods. Simple home massing on narrow and house-dominant configurations support a wide variety of traditional neighborhood design styles." And this document was put together by the EDA in the beginning of the process. You know, listening to the proposed costs of these townhomes and twin homes, it's inconceivable to me that people will pay fifty thousand dollars more for a twin home or a patio home than, than what the single-family homes presently for sale in the neighborhood are, have an asking price of, in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The, construction of homes in the present Milford Heights First Edition is driven by about seventeen pages of documents, there is a declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions, and an eleven-page design criteria documents that I just ran from. And these documents define almost all aspects of the home design, placement of homes and lots, and paint colors. It's very, 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 very specific. It has a big impact on how you cite your home on the lot. Most of us, you know, our largest investment is in our home. And my wife and I, we chose our lot as part of a single-family residence district, that's why we wanted to move to Milford Heights. And if, if we knew that this change was coming, we probably would not have bought a lot built in Milford Heights First Edition. The other concern I have is that, I understand Mr. Paylor's wants and desires and his commitment to this development, but if something should go awry with this development, and the zoning is changed to R3, what other uses are compatible in the R3 multiple-family residence district, and what are some of the conditional uses? So as I understand it, apartment buildings would be a permitted use in an R3, is that correct?
Apartment buildings are permitted uses in the R3, apartment buildings are not permitted uses in the medium-density residential designation through the comprehensive.
Thank you for clarifying that. Would, would a trailer home development be a conditional use?
Yes, it would be in the R3 zoning.
These are some of the concerns we have. Streets in Milford Heights, they're about four feet narrower than the standard city street, so if we increase the density, you know, if you, if you want to take a drive up to Fender Drive sometime, when people have parked on both sides of the street, if we increase the density, we're going to increase the traffic in, in that area. That's pretty much what I have to be, and the other thing concerns me, this seems to be spot zoning, you know, we pick out a small area. The, the change in the zoning will butt presently-developed lots, or be across the alley from presently-developed lots in the Milford Heights subdivision. So, thank you very much for your time.
Do you feel your value of your house is going to go down because of this?
Pardon me?
Do you feel the value of your house is going to go down because of this?
I, I'm, we, I don't, I don't know. You know, I'm not a realtor, I'm not an attorney, so, you know, as I understand it, you know, somebody'd have to appraise my house now to tell me what it's worth, and then appraise it after the, the change in the zoning, or the, the other construction were to take place. And I have a written copy of my, our comments, and some reference material, plus a, a copy of a petition that forty-eight of the people who live in Milford First Edition and on Park Lane and Lee Avenue signed, so who should I give that to? Okay, thank you.
That's forty-eight opposed?
My name's Peter Boggins, I live at 621 Fender, and I want to second his concerns because this would be directly behind my house. We would be looking at these townhouses now, and all of us bought into this area, knowing that there were all these regulations in place. Garages had to be built to an alley and back, as he mentioned earlier, there were all these restrictions on, on home colors and all of these other things, and now all of a sudden, we'd be looking at this complete change, going to a different kind of housing right in our backyard. And, part of this doesn't even seem to make much sense, why this particular area? Because further back towards Seventh Street, there would be more room, it wouldn't be right-abutting our houses, which have already been developed according to the old rules, why put them right in this area where the streets have already been developed? So we've lived through several years of, of unpaved streets, we went through all the development of all of this with the goal in sight that eventually we would have our own area of residential housing there, and now all of a sudden, we're looking at this major change, and that's why I'm one of those that signed this petition.
Thank you.
Paul Guerrero, I live at 612 Fender Drive. Purchased the house there, like everyone else has been saying, that we wanted, they were showcasing the neighborhood look, and, at least with the sign that was posted at the time at the corner of Twenty-seventh and Fender, it looked like that was going to be a single-family development for the three blocks toward the high school. Understand, yes, things can change. With respect though to Mr. Paylor, it sounded like there were way too many maybes and ifs in his proposition. Certainly, without any houses there and out, without any buyers, you can't really say whether or not you're going to fill it up or not. That was just something I'd, I'd noted, and again, it would be a great thing to have the eleven empty lots and the two empty houses on Fender sold at this point as well. So, again, speaking in opposition. Thank you.
Anyone else? This is your opportunity to speak up, so.
Hey, my name's Rick Corcoran, I live at 626 Haberly, and my main concern is, is the size of the roads, and basically, I would say, before you make your decision, go up there and check it, because if they have an alley between the townhomes, I know with my truck, there's no way I could turn, because them roads and alleys are narrow. So that's my main concern, and I'm with everybody else, basically. So that's all I have to say.
Is that a problem existing right now for the rest of you, the size, the way the roads are?
Well, not really, because they're not up there yet, but if they do this development and put this other alley in between, and then actually, I still say to it, you know, if certain cars park in certain places, the fire trucks ain't going to get through up there. Not with curved roads like that, it's different on straight roads. Because I mean, in town, you can take a semi-turn and make a U-turn, you know, and up here, I don't even think a semi could drive through there with cars parked. Because they are narrow streets, and, and narrow alleys, you know. So I would say that's a concern that I would check out. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? This is an opportunity for you to speak, pro or con. This is a nice crowd, by the way, thanks for coming. You wanted to speak again? Go ahead.
I just want to speak on, you know, a few of the comments. There is a big change, you know, talked about the cost of why spending more for more money. We are seeing the design, I mean, right now, we're filling up for next year in sales, ready to sell contracts on houses, some up there, some in other areas of town. People are willing to pay, there's, there's a big difference between two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and a hundred and seventy thousand dollars that the EDA's at. You know, you're looking at six to seven hundred square feet more finished product. The two hundred and twenty-five thousand, when you walk in, sidewalks, driveways, everything is finished. You turn the key, you relax on the couch. So that's one of the things that, spending that more money makes you feel comfortable when you get your loan, knowing, how am I ever going to finish the rest of it? And that's kind of where it is in the existing community there, I believe those sales are based on the one-floor finish. You know, the, the detached, or the garages to the back, my argument there is, you know, we're doing front-loaded garages, just like most houses in town. I think the appeal is there more to drive in there than the back, which goes on Rick's comment about the alleys. We are not putting the alleys in. We are plating the alleys, the commission talked about, and David talked about having the alleys there for the future, but we see no use for the alleys, because you cannot meet somebody on the alley, you can't back into the garage decent on an alley, and we don't have rear-loaded garages, we're loaded in the front. So the garages, or the alleys will be there for future, if the city so chooses to improve them, or the homeowners want them. Otherwise, we see it as a, a maintenance issue, and seems like more junk or something could get stored in the back. Again, this is with the, we're calling it the new time, you don't see them. Our goal is that it's going to look like Six, Seventh, and Eighth Street, you know, up in the Chancery Edition. We want the upper-end houses. They are, you know, selling that way. Street sizes, you know, we can't go back and reinvent the wheel we're the curb and the gutter in, we're going to follow city, city policy for our streets, whatever is requested, you know, on that. And the last comment on why that area, the people that we've talked to on the three-to-four-hundred-thousand-dollar homes plus, it's kind of a, a nice tradition, transition. We're going for one-seventy to two-hundred thousand, you know, whatever the existing homes are in. We step up to a twin home or these rowhouses at two-twenty-five, probably, two, maybe two-fifty, depending on, you know, the, the amenities on them, and then we hop into the, you know, the bigger lots where we can put up the wider houses. So that's just kind of what my comments were, I don't know what you have, Mark.
Well, the concern that they had, the reason that we're putting those there is the transition, and also the lot sizes, and then also, if you're concerned about apartments going up later, we plan on building the four-unit complex, we want to break ground this fall. we plan on building the four-unit complex. We want to break ground this fall. And that'll be the first four unit. We're only talking of two rows that are still available. It wouldn't even be enough room to build an apartment. So there would be nothing available that's rezoned to build the apartments. So the concern there is kind of...
And I think the concerns could be helped if, we've been working with Mr. Hipper and our attorney have been talking, and the EDA board. We're learning more and more about some bylaws. And I do believe that the EDA development is also, you know, this is their input. We, Mark and I didn't come up with this ourselves. This is input from them. And one of the big reasons is, is the comment about, you know, the area with the porches and stuff. It's not going over well enough. That, you should be selling, you know, eight to 10 homes in that subdivision a year minimum. You know, so, you know, we don't want to wreck what's there, but what's there just isn't working for our time. So that's why we are working with different agencies to move it forward. And they have to approve this. So in my understanding is, is I think in the development agreement and the EDA agreement, it's going to state that row houses, twin homes, or whatever is the commission decides is set forth. So if this land doesn't work or is transferred, I think it would have to go back to the EDA and the commission that somebody can't just step in and bring in a trailer home or apartments. I mean, there's some strict guidelines from an EDA selling to a single developer. So we want to protect your houses. We, if you guys are happy, everyone in there is going to get along and, you know, can be a better community. So we sure want to work with you and not cause any problems.
Dave?
Just a question. You're purchasing a total of 20 acres?
Correct.
If you build out that entire 20 acres, how many dwelling units do you think you would end up with?
The top, so from, what's that center row in Beinhorn, the east-west road? From Beinhorn towards Old 27, towards the high school, we're taking those lot sizes from 50s and 60s going to 80s and 90s. So we're looking at eight houses per block instead of 10 and 11. So there would be one, two, three, four, five, six, 48 homes up on the top half. Yeah, that one doesn't have all of them on there.
This is the proposed change.
Yeah.
We made, they're actually, I think, from the original plan, I think there's, how many were in the original plan?
Ninety-seven.
Yeah, that's with the original phase.
I think there was 66 that were tentatively quieted in here. And what do we have now, 68?
Yeah.
So there's two more dwelling units in the whole parcel than there was. And these are all plotted because these row houses are 30 feet wide. This is, this is what we're talking about here for the twin homes. And then these three right here are the row houses.
So the upper half, the density would be less up there. And we are putting the roads, there was talk about living with the gravel roads and stuff. Our intention is, with the sales that have come forth, I think we would probably be putting first-layer betuminas down probably next fall already. So, on the first phase. We're not opening the whole subdivision up. Obviously, we don't need those many, that many houses to start with. We have eight residential in the first round, plus the row houses and twin homes. Anybody else?
Good. Anyone else?
Good afternoon. My name is Dan Brahm. And I'm here today on behalf of a private group or a private citizen group. We're known as the Housing Needs Initiative. And we were formed after a visioning conference last fall. We're tasked with assessing housing needs in New Ulm. And we've been doing that since late last fall, early this year. And one of the first tasks we were undertaking was to review the 2012 housing plan and then work with the EDA and review the 17 plan. I think Dave did a good job kind of already identifying what we are seeing of current needs for housing in New Ulm. And I just wanted to go on record on behalf of our group in support of this simply because it's identified what our current needs are. I think that some of the changes that are proposed are what is currently being felt or addressed or what we've been seeing with our public forums, with a lot of folks out there looking for the types of housing that they propose to build. We're not, Mr. Paylor and Mr. Schaefer are not going overboard with strictly looking at those types of housing. If you look at those types as a proportion of the overall development, I would still state that the majority of the homes are going to be single-family detached and would offer consistency with the current Milford Phase 1 development. I just had a question too, quick for you, Dave. Has the comp plan ever been changed for any other R3 developments over the last 20 years? To accommodate an R3 development? Don't mean to put you on the spot, sorry.
You did. I would, I'd have to do some research on that.
Well, I just know where I live, in a single-family detached R1 home, less than a block away, there are R3 residences. And I can state unequivocally that it hasn't been an impairment to my personal use and enjoyment of my property. I feel where I live, they're good neighbors and it provides a necessary and needed alternative for people seeking different types of housing. So I think that this period of adjustment, I understand, would be kind of difficult for some folks. But I think ultimately, people would adjust. And I think overall, would better fulfill the needs of the community as a whole right now. So that's all I guess I have to say.
Dave?
My name's Deanne Romine and I reside at 644 Fender Drive also. A question I have is, why do we need to rezone to R2 and to an R3 before we really know how it's going to sell? I mean, if we have to change, you know, if we have to make a rezone, why not change to rezone 2, put in the patio homes, that kind of thing, rather than building these cookie-cutter expensive homes, which I'm not certain that you're going to get young people to move into or retired people like myself who want a one-level home? Anyway, that's all I have to say.
My name is Jeff Dietrich. I reside at 800 South Garden. I'm the broker-owner of Century 21 Kekkert Realty. And I can speak from firsthand experience of development. I did development similar to the first phase of the subdivision up there. That was all designed by Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership. It was a design where you have porches, you have attached garage, you have alleys, kind of like what I would call the All-American Neighborhood. But like everything else, trends change. They wanted us to do that similar project in the early 2000s in Cortland. And we recognized right away, this isn't going to work. It's an antiquated system that, like I said, trends change. The comments about houses up there decreasing in value, I disagree with that. I talked with Paul earlier on the phone, and here's why. You would have an established subdivision up there, and I understand people want to protect their investment. However, with expansion up there, you get more city amenities. I talked to Tom Schmitz, that park will get finished. The roads will get paved. That all adds value to your investment in the, now and in the future. As far as the cookie cutter, so to speak, this is a trend. This is what people are looking for. Just like, the only thing, the only trend I haven't seen that really has come back, you know, the people want the attached garage, shag carpeting, that has not come back and it probably never will. But this is, you know, these are what people are looking for. And as I told Paul on the phone, a townhome or a home like this is going to appeal to not only the people who are retiring, who want to come from the farm, have bad joints, want everything on one floor. To be honest with you, I hate to offend any millennials in here, they're lazy. They don't want to do the yard work, the snow removal. They want something they can drive in the garage, kick back, uncork a bottle of wine, and enjoy their home. They don't want to go outside and mow lawn. They don't want to have a garden. So, like I said, trends change. The comment about why hasn't those two houses up there sold? The cost of building has just gotten crazy. It's not only the cost of land. You look at cost of land where Walmart, the high school, Menards, $30,000 an acre. You cannot cash flow something that way. We see people, if they can afford a home 160 that's in the Milford Heights Edition, they can find something existing that's got a bigger yard, a bigger house, finished basement, appliances, things like that. So from a standpoint there, yeah, the model that Milford First Edition was designed after, that's gone by the wayside. Because like I said, when we did it in Cortland, state had money. If you could afford, or we had a house for sale for 120, you could afford 103. We had money to bridge that gap. The state of Minnesota had 10 grand. We had money to bridge that gap, but those programs are all gone. So, like I said, I disagree with the comment that my home value is going to go down. The only way your home value is going to go down is if an economic disaster hits like 2008. Then we're all in trouble. But from what these guys want to do in that neighborhood, your value's not going to go down because you're going to reap the benefits of more amenities in the neighborhood, you know, park, better streets, things like that. So, that's my two cents worth.
Joanne Taylor. I live at 507 North Washington. And I also serve on the Housing Needs Initiative group. I'm hoping that as you consider this request, my support for it will come to your attention as one of a benefit for our whole community. Because as we looked at the housing needs report that we just received a couple of months ago, it became clear that we have a housing shortage across the board here in New Ulm. We have, every level of income is affected by not being able to find a place to live. If we can have a developer come in and voluntarily create infrastructure for us that even if the EDA were to go ahead and develop that land as had originally been planned, it would be another two years before we see any of that infrastructure in place. If that person is going to do that for us, I'm a pastor, I can say this, God bless him. Because that's going to benefit the whole community. And the trickle-down effect, the dominoes are going to fall. So that people who move into those homes will create more housing stock at other levels that other people who can afford less will be able to finally afford. And will have more homes lived in by more people who want to stay in New Ulm and make it a strong community. So I'm in strong support of this and I hope that you will see it as a good thing to do.
Good.
I'm Mary Ellen Dolemeier, 916 South Jefferson Street. And I too am a member of the HNI or the Housing Needs Initiative Task Force. And this actually arose, this group actually arose out of a visioning process that the New Ulm Area Foundation and the Chamber of Commerce sponsored for citizens in New Ulm last November. We had been hearing for a couple of years, some of us that intermingle with various aspects of the city and its, what's going on in the city, that there was a housing need. And at that particular visioning session, we had employers there saying that you can offer someone a job and they may turn it down two days later because there's no house in New Ulm available for them. That meets their criteria, whether that was price or whether it was space or whether it was location. So that kind of affirmed what we were anecdotally hearing. So we did as Dan said, and I can't speak as eloquently as did Joanne, but we did do our homework. We looked at the 2012 Housing Needs Study and found that lots of things in there could have been addressed and were not being addressed. So we thought it's time to get going. Fortunately, the EDA did authorize, with the city's approval, getting a new study. And we did just receive that two months ago. And that gives the science to the anecdotal information that we had. As Ann indicated, we've got needs across the board. We have homeless. We have people living in hotels that would rather have something else to live in. We have modest, we have people of modest means who would like to buy anything from $85,000 to $125,000 home. And we have others, people with perhaps more means, who want to accept jobs, whether it's engineering or medical professions or other types of jobs, want to have something in a higher range, a higher cost range than maybe some of us might have. They are unable to find adequate housing. The EDA owns this property. Whether it's appropriate for a city to be in the business of housing or not has been something that's been questioned for some years now, given what's taken place in Milford Heights and the lack of movement of the property there. All perhaps due to the timing of it originally. This is an opportunity, as Joanne said as well, that someone, and perhaps folks don't realize here, that Mr. Paylor is an expert in this business. His entities have been involved in this for many years. He has many successful developments. Again, that we ought to be grateful that we have an opportunity to move some property from the EDA into private ownership where it goes on to the tax rolls, the property tax rolls sooner rather than later. I too am thinking that this is fulfilling the purpose of the EDA when it comes to housing and meeting, helping meet housing needs. And it's one of the goals of the Housing Task Force as well. So I too am in support of this request.
Dave? Oh, I thought you were getting up to speak. Anyone else? All right, we're going to move on. I guess I'm going to make a couple of comments just in. First of all, thank you for as many people showing up. We do need to hear the pros and the cons when these type issues come up. And a lot of good feedback that we needed to hear, okay? Secondly, I want to let everyone know here that we are only a recommendation group. We can't make any decision for you tonight. Excuse me. We're taking the information and giving some feedback. There's a lot of details that are tied to this that are going to take some time. I know you want to be aggressive and get going in this fall. But there's several things, just the development agreement and all of those type things. I mean, somebody has to work really, really hard to work those out to meet your deadline. So we will try to do our part. But again, we're a recommendation body. And whatever we do here tonight, we'll go to the city council on Tuesday. And I'm sure there's several of these that are going to go back and forth a while. So, just feedback in general of our role and what we do, okay? So moving on, do we want to take these one at a time?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Do you want to close the public?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, closing the public hearing. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, motion carried. Dave, what's your recommendation? Or do we go through these one, two, three, down to the bottom, one at a time?
You should go through them starting...
I'll read them off and then we'll go from there, okay? Item one, that a portion of the property be zoned from R1, single-family resident district, to R2, single and two-family resident district. That's item number one. We all got your agenda packets, so I'm assuming that everybody is aware of where we're going here. Thoughts?
Is there going to be a problem down the road with the old, the paper that was originally signed by the landowners and with the ADA about what was going to be in that contract? I mean, if they, what was going to be up in the Milford Heights Edition? That gentleman had a pamphlet earlier. Is that going to be a problem?
Covenant or something. You're thinking the covenant.
Development agreement? Yes.
Those were covenants, right?
Those covenants only apply to Milford Heights First Edition. They do not apply to the remainder of the property. So the property that's being purchased is not subject to those.
Yes, I got a question for staff. And considering other parts of town like the Diocese area, we've got R1 and R2 in that development. I'm just trying to use an example within the community.
Yeah, there's a subdivision that Mel Shugal did down on North Highland Avenue where we've got twin homes on one side of the street and single-family dwellings on the other. Lakeside Village, which was originally done by the... Lakeside Village, which was originally done by the, um, by the Rothmires, has got a combination of R1, R2, and R3 zoning districts. So, you know, you see that kind of arrangement in the community.
So it's not like we're just spot zoning? It's, you know, we've, we've got a pattern already within the community?
I would say that we've done similar type of zoning in the community. Um, so, yeah.
In the newer developments?
In newer developments.
Yeah.
I mean, we also have within the community, if you look at St. Michael's Apartments, zoned R3, surrounded by R2. Um, you look at Hyman's Condominiums, zoned R3. Um, we've got a warehouse on one side, but we've got a lot of R1 zone properties surrounding that. Um, we have a number of locations where we have apartment complexes that are surrounded by, you know, residential uses of less intensity.
Thank you.
I can go along with this one as far as moving it, moving it forward so we can have, get some, continue.
Well, I'll offer a motion to, for item one, to the property be rezoned from R1, single-family residence, residential district, to R2, single and two-family residential district, and see the agenda packet for legal description.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Approving.
Mr. Chair, if I might add that, um, the reason for making that decision is for the items that are identified in the staff report as, uh, uh, you know, uh, items that would support that rezoning request. That is the basis for your motion.
So you want that in the verbiage of the motion? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I'm saying that, um, you know, the motion can stand by itself, but the, you know, the findings of fact that support the motion are the items that were identified in the staff report.
Chair, I think what Mr. Snowbrake is getting at is that if that's the decision of the commission to recommend this, you need to, um, on the record, at least be confirming the reasons for it, so that there are actually findings of fact, and kind of acting as a quasi-judicial body here. And they have been there. If you agree with them, you don't need to incorporate them into the motion or necessarily recite all of the detail on the record, but if you decide to do this, you should at least reference that that is in support of your decision.
Okay.
I will.
Whatever you say.
Just to reference it.
I'm just going to reference, you know, it's, it's in the staff report.
Findings of fact.
Findings of the fact.
Likewise, Mr. Gold?
Yes, and I still second that.
All right, we'll start.
Explain that.
State that, uh, you know, in a complete sentence, so you can understand what the amendment to the resolution is.
I'll just, I'll just restate it from the beginning. I will offer motion of the property to be rezoned from R1, single-family residential district, to R2, single-family residential district, and have to see the staff report with the...
Finding of fact?
Finding of fact. Uh... I don't know how far I want to go into it here, trying to find the...
Does that answer your question, the reason, or he's making the motion based on finding of fact?
What the motion is, how can you hold on?
Let me find it on which page here.
Okay, the, um, in the staff report, um, the rezoning of the property is listed on page five, six, and seven. And so it's, that's where the findings of fact would be located.
All right, with pages five, six, and seven, finding of fact.
Hold on a second. There are a lot of people are squirming. We need to get a motion on the floor first. If we get a motion and a second, then we'll open it up for discussion, okay?
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
So, my motion is to rezone the property from R1, single-family residential district, to R2, single and two-family residential district, on finding of facts on page five, six, and seven of the staff report.
I'd second that.
Let me interrupt. Commissioner Reddy indicated which parcel you were referring to. Legal descriptions are fairly lengthy and they're provided, but in this motion, it was... Mr. Snowbrake, have you got it, Andy, there which parcel was?
We got part one of lot block two.
Part two.
Okay, it's referenced as Exhibit A in the rezoning petition.
You initially said that, I just wanted to make sure that was in the motion in the record. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
May I, can I bring something?
Step to the mic, please.
I'm a little confused about what Milford Heights First Edition is. This is the map that we were given, what Milford Heights First Edition was when we bought our land to build, and I'll show it to you. Can you put it? Give it to the attorney here. I'll need that back because I have notes on it.
Yeah. The, Milford Heights First Edition is part of what you see here. It does not include this area up here. Um, I've, I have a diagram of Milford Heights First Edition.
Okay.
The first four lots.
Okay. Okay.
Did you get your question answered?
Thank you.
Any other discussions? Last chance. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, motion carried. Now, all of these are going to end up going to the city council Tuesday at 4:30. So, again, these are just recommendations, and they'll take it from there. Item 2A.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I could just briefly interrupt, um, we probably should do 2B first, which is the compliant amendment.
Because of comprehensive plan, right. All right, we'll switch to 2B first, because that's, we have to, the one about the comprehensive plan. 2B, that the comprehensive plan for the city of New Ulm be amended for the property identified in items 2B to permit medium-density residential land uses in place of low-density residential land uses. So we're recommending that you have to, uh, the city council would have to amend the comprehensive plan, or requesting them to amend a comprehensive plan.
I'll make a motion to, to approve that change to the comprehensive plan.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, approving the request for changing the comprehensive plan. Any other discussion?
Okay, if I might note, that would be for the reasons, again, stated in the staff report, um, found on, um, pages two, three, four, and five.
Okay, I'll amend that motion to include, for the reasons listed in the findings of fact by the staff.
I will still second.
Any other discussion? So we're voting on the amended motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Item 2A, that a portion of the property be rezoned from R1, single-family residence district, to R3, multiple-family residence district, per the agenda packet and, or the legal description. That gets quite lengthy.
If you, uh, if you should decide to recommend approval, then that again would be for, um, the information provided on pages five, six, and seven of the, of the report.
I'd make a motion to rezone R1, single-family residence district, to R3, multi-family residence district, as seen in the staff reports on pages, what is it, five, six, and seven?
Yeah. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the request. I'm not going to read it all, we've, hear, hear it on the tape, so, um, a motion and a second, correct? Um, discussion, I have a question for Mr. Paylor. You mentioned, I believe, that this particular one is the first section you want it to work on?
Uh, yes, uh, would be off of, is it, Hare, Hareborough Avenue? Um, that would be the first unit that would go up this fall. Only reason for that is, again, utilities are right there, um, we only have to put in, you know, a few hundred feet of street, so we're, we're trying to not start out in the middle of nowhere and not, you know, have the tumulus roads, undeveloped, you know, and then, you know, nice roads down there. So we're working from where we're at, and we're heading towards the high school. That way, every time a phase goes in, it's completed and there's nothing unfinished in between.
Okay, there were some current concerns mentioned here relative to that particular one about a lot of different things being put on a lot, but if you're going to start in that section and building there first...
Correct.
We take that option away. Is that, am I hearing that right?
Correct.
Right.
Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Again, all three of those items will go to the city council August 1st, Tuesday, 4:30 PM. And many of you, you might want to attend that meeting. Thank you for coming to this one. Item three, consider for approval the final plat of Oak Bluff 7th Edition.
Okay, members of the planning commission, the applicant is Jeffrey Peterson. The property owner is the Jeffrey L. Peterson Living Trust and the Angela T. Peterson Living Trust. The current legal description of the property is Lot 11, Block 3, Oak Bluffs 4th Edition. The street address is 1442 to 1448 10th North Street. Property is zoned R2, single and two-family residence district. Uh, the status of the plat, uh, the city council approved the preliminary plat with conditions at its July 5th, 2017 meeting. Background on this particular request, the property is located east of North Highland Avenue and north of 10th North Street. The property is undeveloped. Property to the north is zoned R1 and R2. To the east, R1. To the south, R1 and R2. And to the west, RA. Property to the east is occupied by single-family dwellings. To the south, twin homes and single-family dwellings. To the west, it is farmed. And to the north, the stormwater pond and single-family dwellings. The plat would divide the lot into two parcels. The property has a total lot area of .33 acres. After plating, Lot 1 would have a lot area of .134 acres, which is 5,850 square feet. And Lot 2 would have .194 acres, which is 8,450 square feet. A twin home will be constructed on the property. The city code requires a separate lot for each privately-owned dwelling unit, and that again is why it is being platted. In 2005, two corner lots between 9th and 10th North Streets were subdivided in a similar fashion. A lot width, lot area, and side yard setback variance are required to approve the plat and those were previously granted. The comprehensive plan designates the property for low-density residential land uses. Comprehensive plan does not designate a park within the platted area. Utilities to serve the property are located in 10th North Street. Status of conditions required for plat approval, there were four conditions. The first was to pay the plating fee of $180. Um, in the staff report, I've listed that payment was pending, that payment has been made. Uh, number two was to secure the variances. The variances have been secured. Number three is the addition will be subject to the terms of the existing development agreement for Oak Bluff 4th Edition. Notification has been provided to the applicant about that requirement. And number four, they have to provide an electronic file of the plat in AutoCAD 2000 or newer format, and that notification has been provided to the applicant and land surveyor. Attached is a copy of the final plat and an aerial photograph of the property. Staff would recommend approval of the final plat, subject to the completion of the conditions.
The only question I have is nothing changed from the preliminary plat?
No.
Then I'll make a motion to, um, approve the final plat, subject to the conditions.
Second.
An a motion and a second, approving the final plat of Oak Bluff 7th Edition. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Item four, consider for approval the preliminary plat of Milford Heights 2nd Edition.
Okay, members of the planning commission, the applicant is Al Paylor on behalf of S&amp;P Development LLC. Current legal description is part of Lot 1, Block 2, 5th North Street, 1st Edition. Street address is 628 to 644 Warju Avenue. Is that right? Um, 630, uh, 633 to 645 Haberly Avenue, 636 to 644 Haberly Avenue, and 649 to 685 Fender Drive. Um, zoning currently is zoned R1, um, has been petitioned for rezoning to R, or to R2 and R3 portions, and a portion of the platted area would remain zoned R1. Background, the property is generally located north and west of Fender Drive and south of 7th North Street. Property is undeveloped. Property to the east consists of single-family dwellings and Fender Park. To the north, it is farmed and undeveloped property. To the west, it is farm property, and to the south, uh, single-family dwellings. Property to the east is zoned R1 and RA. To the south, R1 and RA. And R1 to the north, property located in Brown County is zoned R1. Platted area totals 9.36 acres. The plat would divide the property as follows. Um, Block 1 would have eight lots, which would total 1.74 acres. Block 2 would have 13 lots, which would total 1.72 acres. Block 3 would have four lots with 0.56 acres. Block 4 would have eight lots, which would result in 2.22 acres. Streets and alleys in the plat would total 2.82 acres, and Outlot A would consist of .3 acres. The lots in Block 4 comply with city code requirements. The lots in Blocks 1, 2, and 3 will require variances. The current comprehensive plan designates the property for low-density residential land uses. Um, the New Ulm Economic Development Authority has petitioned for the amendment of the plan to allow medium-density... to allow medium-density residential land uses in Block 2. The comprehensive plan does not designate a park within the platted area. Utilities to serve the property are located in Fender Drive, Warju Avenue, and Haberly Avenue. Attached is a copy of the preliminary plat and aerial photograph of the property. And where the asterisks are located on the aerial, that's the area that is being platted. Staff would recommend approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the following conditions. Payment of the plating fee of $1,120, base fee of $130, and $30 per lot. We have to determine parkland dedication requirements. There is some excess park area remaining from the first plat that would apply to this plat, so we have to determine how that all fits and what those requirements will be. We have to enter into a development agreement, we need to provide necessary utility easements, we have to secure the necessary variances, we have to provide an electronic file of the plat in AutoCAD 2000 or newer format, we need to rezone appropriate parcels of property from R1 to R2 and R3. And then, two items, final two items, one is we need to have an alley on the west side of Block 4. And the purpose of the alley, as was previously indicated, is not for necessarily access purposes, but as much it's for, just for utilities and for drainage. The property was previously graded, and the grading, or drainage corridors have been established, you know, where the streets are, but they also were established where the alleys were supposed to be. So, we're gonna have, you know, a variety of utilities in, in those areas, serving the development on either side of it. So, that's why we need the alley here.
All of those would be in the development agreement?
That would all be covered in the development agreement, and it will be covered in future plats that might be done of this area as well. The final thing is, the property was originally set up with an 80-foot right-of-way for Beinhorn Street. The city engineer feels that, that width of right-of-way should remain, and so, I guess ultimately, that's something that the city council will have to make a decision on.
So all of those conditions are recorded someplace?
Are what?
All of those conditions are recorded someplace, so we don't have to read them all off in our motion?
Uh, yeah, I've, it's, yeah, we have them recorded.
I'd make a, a motion to approve the final plat of the Oak Hill 7th Edition.
This is the preliminary plat.
With conditions that the city has put forth.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, approving the preliminary plat with the conditions the staff reported. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
He's got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hard to see you when I'm looking at the table.
One of the conditions on there is variance needed. What does that variance consist of?
We can go through that, what, there's a list of variances that'll need to be secured. They're primarily in the, where the townhomes are proposed, and there's one for the twin homes, so...
Okay.
We'll, we'll do that all at one time.
Okay, super.
Clear as mud? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 6, staff of revisions of the zoning and subdivision, I guess.
Nope, we have one more item. I believe a simple lot division.
I skipped one, did I?
Yeah.
Well, we'll back up.
It's a long packet.
Consider, consider for approval a simple lot division of the rear 80 feet of Lot 1, Block 133, north of Center Street.
Okay, the applicant is, and owner is Mary Ann Grunmeyer, and this is associated with the variance request previously considered by the board of zoning adjustment. Current legal description is rear 80 feet of Lot 1, Block 133, north of Center Street. The address is 810 8th North Street, zoning's R2. I'm not gonna go through everything in the report, other than the proposed legal descriptions would be the rear five feet of the, excuse me, the east five feet of the rear 80 feet of Lot 1, Block 133, north of Center Street. Parcel B would be the rear 80 feet of Lot 1, Block 133, north of Center Street, except the east five feet thereof. Parcel A will be sold to the property owner in the front of the lot. Staff would recommend approval, subject to the following conditions. That the applicant record the resolution authorizing the lot division, that parcel A will be combined with the front 85 feet of Lot 1, Block 133, north of Center Street, to form one parcel of property for tax and building purposes. And number three, the applicant will secure a lot area variance.
I'll make a motion to approve a simple lot division with the conditions described.
I'd second that.
A motion and a second, approving the request with revisions that were presented. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, we'll go to status revision of zoning and subdivision regulations, anything?
Nothing new to report there, other than bad news. And the bad news is that Julie Wilford, who had been employed to assist staff amongst other things with that project, has submitted a letter of resignation and will be leaving us tomorrow, so... That's unfortunate, so...
All right, we'll move on. Item 7, report on city council decisions concerning planning commission matters.
Okay, at the July 5th meeting, city council, they approved with conditions a preliminary plat of Oak Bluff 7th Edition, which we just took action on the final plat. They approved the, the variances as well for that plat. They approved with one condition, the application of John Gog on behalf of JMG Rentals, are requesting a conditional use permit to locate a fitness center and karate classes on property zoned I2 at 319, 327 North Front Street. And they tore down the...
Correct, they tore it down.
Tore down the last house on the, on the property, so they're proceeding. They approved with conditions the application of Jill Nysley for a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a hair salon as a home occupation at 55 Jonathan Drive. At that same meeting, they accepted a grant from the National Park Service for updating the downtown preservation design guidelines. And at the following meeting, they retained Thomas Zahn and Associates to proceed with that work. At the July 18th meeting, they authorized the city manager to sign a purchase agreement and earnest money contract to acquire 43.94 acres of land. I'm gonna refer to it as the Schultz property, which is north of Walmart, and that would be for the expansion of the airport industrial park. And that acquisition will be made in, I think, sometime at the middle of December. They also had the first reading at that meeting of a, what I'm gonna call a golf cart ordinance. Larry's available to give a detailed explanation of that.
I don't think the planning commission had anything to do with golf carts, so...
Thankfully, they didn't, but that's just for your information. That takes care of it.
Anything on the Heritage Preservation Commission?
Uh, nothing before the committee.
Anything from the commissioners? No other further business, meeting adjourned.